Thank you. How many we got here? We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay.
Meredith and Cindy. Good morning.
Nice. Good.
All right, everybody. Good morning. Thank you for being here this morning. We've still got a -- hello? 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 So today we are starting -- we have three hours. Actually now we have two hours and 45 minutes to work on the strategic plan. And I hope everybody took a look at both the materials as well as the explanation of where we are and what we're doing today. The main focus today is going to be on looking at the desired outcome as well as the objectives. The superintendent and the staff have put together as well a couple of samples of the different types of strategies. This is not complete. It's not intended to be complete. It's just intended to give us a sense of the direction that we're going in and to give us an opportunity to give some feedback as well. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Garza to explain what we're doing. I hope that everybody had a chance to get a sense of the four different areas and how we're going to proceed today. But with that, Karen, if you would.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Members of the Board, good to see you. I don't know why, it feels like a little while since I've seen you. And I know it hasn't been that long, has it?
It's been excellent.
Okay. That's a good thing. That we miss each other, right? That's the good thing. We do have -- we have developed a draft timeline, kind of the big picture, what you can expect over these next few months. And it does say "draft," so today if you all have feedback about this timeline or want us to consider a varied timeline. This was developed in light of just other meetings and other obligations that are before the Board, so I hope that we've taken those things into consideration. But I think the big picture is very important. Of course, we have today. Now, we didn't include everything that we've done prior to today. But beginning today, and we'll talk more about what we're going to work on today, at the November 13th work session, the next month's work session, you will receive a full draft version of the plan, which I'll talk about in just a minute, will be this document completely filled out. But we purposely did not include all of that today because we really wanted to focus some time and attention on some particular areas. But just want you to know, for those of you that are kind of like, "Okay, when we're going to see the whole full-blown plan?" We will have that ready for you all as a draft in November. We are contemplating, assuming that time works for you all, a November-December time period for us to conduct focus groups of varied stakeholders to bring in. And like we did for Full Day Monday, we would do something similar but on a larger scale, parents, community members, teachers, principals, various focus groups after that November 13th meeting, because we'll have a draft document for them to react to. And so we'll conduct focus groups, assuming that meets your needs. And then in January, we'll have a final draft strategic plan that reflects the input we've gotten from the community for your consideration. And then, of course, adoption in February, you'll see there. Now, of course, it's a busy time of year in January because of budget development, so certainly later today if you want to have us consider a different timeline. But I want to -- I felt like it was important to have the big picture. Today, I believe you have seen a sample, or it was posted, a sample of the actual template that we're going to be using. And today you'll have also an opportunity to tell us whether this works for you all. Of course, you all adopted last month, it's hard to believe, but it was just last month, the goal statements, the four strategic goal areas. What we have put together is a document that underneath that has desired outcomes, which means what is our big picture? What do we want to accomplish as a result of that major goal area? And because some of the goal areas are big, and I like what they are, I think we've -- you all really did some great work there, but we have to break them down. For an example, in the area of premier workforce, there's a great goal statement where we talk about strategic premier workforce, and that is, "We commit to invest in our employees, encourage innovation, and celebrate success." But in order for us to develop and execute in that area, we had to break it down and chunk it. For an example, recruitment and retention of high-quality employees would be a major piece of that, right? So you'll find in each of the four areas, and Marty will walk through these in just a minute, we've actually chunked the work into what we think are kind of the major buckets of work under each of the four strategic goal areas. So today, what we've done is we really would like for you all to give us feedback on the written and draft desired outcomes that we've developed and the objectives under each of the four goal areas. There are about three or four different objectives, and I call them kind of sub-goals. And you'll be able to have a chance to tell us, are those the right buckets under each? Because I think those are important areas, because those will be used a lot in terms of the documents that we'll develop moving forward, is kind of what are the strategic -- kind of what are -- what are we priorities underneath those? We've given in each of the areas only two to three sample strategies. Now, I've gotten some feedback on that, because I think the impression was that was it. Oh, no. We have lots of sample strategies under each of the areas, but we didn't want that to be the exclusive focus of the work today. And we just felt like we would really get in the weeds if we started focusing on strategies today. So we're trying to chunk the work. You approved the goals. Now we're trying to get the sub-goals or objectives right. We've already started working on the indicators, which are our measures. But today, we'd like for you to kind of focus on that. You'll also have the opportunity to give us some examples of strategies that you want for us to consider moving forward. We've captured a lot of that feedback that you've given to us over the few months, last few months or almost a year. But this will be an opportunity for you to also say, "Hey, this is a strategy that I think is high-leverage in one of these areas that we want for -- we'd love for the staff to consider as we flesh out the full plan moving forward." So if you do have burning strategy ideas there, we'll give you an opportunity to react to -- and give that to us, because we're working intently on this document right now. And because this is such a smart group of people and you're all great writers, I know there will be someone that will want to wordsmith today. Totally understand it. I'm a former English teacher, and I like to do it too. So just for those of you that have ideas around word changes that you would suggest, just think in this process today, if it's a wordsmithing idea, if you would capture it on this pink, this is only for wordsmithing today, are the pink notes. And so capture it, because you -- I will tell you, there are a number of Board members that have given us great ideas around word changes that were important, and we've made those.
And we do have extra pink stickies for those.
Yeah.
They may need them.
And you'll see over there where it says additional items, we didn't call it wordsmithing chart, but that you can substitute wordsmithing chart for additional items. You know, capture them for us, and we'll make sure that we take those into consideration too as we continue to refine this document. We want this to be a great document that's a very positive reflection on our school system, and so we very much appreciate your ideas. And I'm going to also say one more thing about -- that I continue to say to our team, and that is, this is such a great opportunity for us to shape the future of our school system. It's such a great opportunity. And so it's -- I describe it as FCPS, Future Forward, right? It's moving forward. What does the future look like? And the strategic plan, then, we have to constantly challenge ourselves, is this work aspirational, and is it high-leverage? Is it really going to move the needle and make the difference for our system and our organization? We don't want it to be just a regurgitation of everything we're currently doing. So as you start to see some of the strategies that we have here today, and we're very much interested in your feedback on these, but we have a bunch more, and we're really trying to hone in and pick those strategies that we think are high-leverage and are really aspirational and really move our system forward. And we will certainly appreciate your help and your leadership as we do that. Any question -- well, let me say one more thing about process. We could have done this in multiple different ways, and in fact, if I ask any one of our Board members, you probably would have had a different process that you would have liked for us to use. But we just felt like, in visiting with Hank and Gina and others at the retreat, that you all did some great work. And we find that because there's 12 of you, that if we took any one of these individually, I think that you all would feel somewhat frustrated, because there's not an opportunity for everyone to weigh in, in a meaningful way. So with that said, and we felt like you all did great work in groups, and then we took -- we worked real hard to make sure that we were reflecting what you all said. And so we're going to try that process again today by dividing you into groups. You'll have an opportunity, and we'll have one of the cabinet members at each one of the charts to help facilitate and capture your ideas and your feedback. And you'll have an opportunity each to reflect and engage and provide feedback on each one of the four goal areas. We're going to spend some quality time on this today. And then the team that starts will actually report out at the end, after you've been to every one of the goal areas. We want to make sure we capture all the thinking in the small groups, and then anything else we might have missed from the larger group. And then, again, we've got a great team of people here in FCPS, and we'll take all of what you've given us, and then we'll continue to refine this and bring this back to you as a document. We just felt like that was the best way we thought of using your time and energy, and I hope that you find the process works today. I think you all have given us feedback that the retreat process worked well, and when you had opportunity to work in smaller groups and everyone had a chance to really talk about the strategy. So I hope the process is in keeping with your -- meets with your satisfaction. Did you want to say something?
I think Jamie had a question. Right. Just as the meeting managers make sure to recap again the instructions, we've already approved the strategic plan areas and the goals. And so what you're asking us to do when we break up is to comment anything on desired outcomes, objectives, and if there is any burning desire or some strategy that you want us to put in. So that's the desired outcome of the activity as we work into each of the goals.
It's actually pretty easy. It's two things. But Marty's going to walk us through all of it, and he's also going to read, just for the benefit of the whole group, read each of -- we have three hours, so we have quality time devoted to this today. So we did feel like it would be beneficial to everyone to kind of read what we have at this point. And then we'll divide you into groups and let you get busy. But mainly, it's two things. Feedback on the desired outcomes and objectives, and we have some drafts for you to look at today. And then the second thing is just any ideas you have around high-leverage strategies. And that means you can give us some feedback on the samples we've given you, or you can bring up anything else that you want to -- for us to consider as we move forward. Okay, Maury, I'm going to let you kind of walk us through and cover everything I missed.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Garza. So you'll have the benefit of the chiefs or the champions for these four strategic areas at facilitating each of the posters. And so we'll be able to answer questions about how the desired outcomes were developed, how the objectives were developed, and also answer any questions that you have about the sample strategies that we have. So you'll have our expertise at the table. As Dr. Garza said, we're looking at this and at sort of the -- we've been at the 30,000-foot level, and now we're going -- moving in on the, you know, 20,000-foot. We haven't landed the plane yet, but we'll get there. And you have to understand also that with our -- the strategies that we've listed, that we will actually go deeper into the work with work plans by department. So if the strategies seem broad to you at this point, it's a good thing, because there will be several pieces to make these strategies actually work for us as the plan is developed. So I want to give you that information to begin with. And if we can go ahead and pull up the Student Success Plan. So I'm going to take an opportunity to just walk you through the information that we've provided. The first of our goal areas, and this is the order that we've become accustomed to, we start with student success, we then go to our caring culture, followed by our premier workforce, and then we have resource stewardship. That's just the process that we've used, and we feel that it makes sense to go in this order. So if you look at student success, our goal that you approved, "We commit to reach, challenge, and prepare every student for success in school and life." And the desired outcome for us with this particular area is that all students will achieve their full potential, achievement gaps will be eliminated. It's interesting to note that for this particular area, the desired outcome is the same for all of our objectives. So we felt that as we looked at the work that we wanted to do, and Steve can jump in at any time, he's the champion of this particular area, that as we looked at the work that we wanted to do around student success, that everything came back to this area. This first objective is to enhance instruction. And we're going to enhance instruction by aligning our curriculum, providing targeted resources, and adjusting instructional delivery and pedagogy to the outcomes defined by Portrait of a Graduate. It was also important for us to ensure that Portrait of a Graduate was tied with our student success. Although it's at the center of all of these goals, it was very important to highlight that within the student success goal area. And then you can see some of the strategies that we have listed there. Develop a structured school improvement model aligned with the strategic plan to support consistency and quality of instruction. Develop a tiered system of supports where school-based autonomy increases as performance metrics are attained. And so if you have questions about those strategies, you can have -- or talk with Steve as we're in -- you're in that group, and he'll be able to answer any questions around those particular strategies. If we move on to the next area of assessment and data systems, again, the outcome is the same. This objective is to provide assessment and data systems to measure and communicate the indicators that comprise the outcomes defined by Portrait of a Graduate. And the sample strategies that we've given you here, we're going to provide a new integrated technological platform, also known as a dashboard, that provides real-time data for teachers and parents. We'd also like to develop a balanced assessment program that assesses both foundational skills and critical thinking, problem-solving, including the use of computer adaptive tools for progress monitoring purposes. On to the next area of college and career. The objective for this area is to provide students opportunities to explore and prepare for college and career through relevant, engaging programs that further enhance the outcomes defined by Portrait of a Graduate. In this particular area, the strategy that we've shared is developing a strategy for providing a portfolio of schools -- of school options that range from small, more tailored schools to career and technology academies, fine and practical arts, et cetera, that provide multiple pathways to graduation along with our traditional comprehensive high And lastly, for student success, the objective is to provide quality early childhood educational experiences so that more children enter kindergarten ready to learn, supporting the development of the outcomes defined by Portrait of a Graduate. So as you can see, Portrait of a Graduate is the primary factor, that's the ribbon that runs among these four areas. The strategies that we've listed, develop a comprehensive plan for full implementation of pre-kindergarten to all qualifying students. And then, secondly, to provide the option for non-qualifying pre-kindergarten students to participate by paying tuition until we are able to fully fund pre-K. The next area that we'd like to highlight is caring culture. We have three objectives for caring culture, and I'll just read the goal statement for all areas. The goal is, again, "We commit to foster responsive, caring, and inclusive culture where all feel valued, supported, and hopeful." In this particular goal area, our desired outcomes are different for each objective. So for this particular objective, we want all stakeholders -- we envision that all stakeholders are engaged and well-informed partners. And so the objective is to foster active communication and engagement among students, staff, families, and the community. You can see some of the strategies listed below. One would be to conduct an audit of all communication functions within FCPS and implement recommendations. As you can see, the communications audit really does support this idea of communication and further engagement with the community. Another strategy is to redesign the public website for consumer-friendly access to information while providing timely school site updates. And the third strategy that we provided is to create an outreach program to enhance support for military families, including a new advisory committee and a specific point of contact within FCPS. It gives you a sense of the direction that we're looking within that particular area. The next area, wanting to make sure that we're on the same page, the desired outcome for this particular objective is, "FCPS will be responsive to all stakeholders, and the organization will be considered as a model environment to work and learn." So the objective there is to strengthen school and organizational culture and responsiveness. Some of the strategies that we've outlined for this particular objective are to develop customer service standards and train all staff to enhance the overall parent and community experience when accessing FCPS services. Another strategy is to increase cultural proficiency of FCPS staff by requiring all to participate in cultural competency training. And lastly, increase number and hours of parent liaisons and enhance training to include working with all community constituents. Our third objective for caring culture is to promote overall health and well-being of students and staff. And so our desired outcome is that FCPS students and staff will make healthy life choices and increase their quality of life. The strategies that we've -- some sample strategies that we've identified there would be to expand executive functioning, resources, and processes to all schools. We know that this is an important piece that we've begun in some of our schools, and we see the value, and we'd like to see that expanded to all of our schools. Implement employee health and wellness team competitions focused on weight loss, exercise, nutrition, and smoking cessation. And a last area is to participate in the federal government's Let's Move initiative as related to student health and wellness nutrition. And I believe that's all we have for that particular area. We move around the table to premier workforce. And again, we have different desired outcomes for the objectives in premier workforce. "We commit to invest in our employees, encourage innovation, and celebrate success" in this particular goal area. The desired outcome is that FCPS will maintain a workforce that feels highly valued, respected, and rewarded for its efforts. And so for this particular objective, we want to recruit and retain high-quality employees by reviewing practices, developing standards, and expanding the candidate pool. So some of the strategies that we've outlined there, to offer incentives for critical need in hard-to-fill positions and create support for high-need schools, and also to develop unique recruiting strategies to target under-representative employee demographics. Next objective, provide competitive compensation packages. We'd like to do that by reviewing practices, developing innovative programs, and increasing employee understanding of true compensation, with the desired outcome being that FCPS will entice and retain employees by becoming a leader in overall compensation practices and portfolios. And so we're going to engage in a compensation study, we've been talking about that for quite some time, to compare FCPS salaries and comprehensive benefits to other school districts, both like-sized and local, and also produce true compensation statements as a way to educate all employees about their salary and comprehensive benefits. And this idea of a true compensation statement is that you have an understanding of more than just what you've put away into your retirement, but how much we're providing and supporting for all of your benefits. You know, what's the true compensation that Fairfax County is putting into you as an employee? So it's more than just salary. The next area in premier workforce is, the objective is to invest in growth and leadership opportunities for all employees by assessing needs, developing consistent professional development structures, and expanding access. And so the outcome is that we will maintain a highly qualified workforce that receives ongoing quality feedback and frequent and meaningful professional development. Some of the strategies, we'd like to develop job-specific professional development plans that outline learning targets for the position while also providing for individual employee needs. We'd also like to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment, because you can't really provide professional development without understanding what our staff members need. So conduct a comprehensive needs assessment that identifies what employees need to know and be able to do in order to be successful in their current roles. The last area, the last objective is to improve HR practices, provide greater clarity and ensure fairness and equity for all employees. The outcome is that the overall FCPS employee experience will be enhanced by clear and efficient policies and practices. So some of the strategies that we've outlined are revising our current regulations for improved clarity and accessibility, develop customer service standards to enhance the overall employee experience when accessing HR services and products, and to develop a comprehensive employee handbook. And you might think that, well, that doesn't seem very forward, future-forward, but it's something that we don't have in Fairfax County, and so we feel that it's important to create that. And lastly, we have two objectives under resource stewardship. The first, and again, the desired outcomes are different for each objective. I'll start with the goal. For resource stewardship, "We commit to champion the needs of our school communities and be responsible stewards of the public's investment." So our desired outcome for this area is that stakeholders will have an increased understanding of division operating and capital needs, and will understand the importance of investing in our student success. And so the key objective there is to promote the value and benefits of the community's investment in FCPS. Two of the strategies -- Two of the strategies are to develop a communication strategy, identifying key communicators and target audiences to educate employees and the public about the operating budget and capital improvement needs. And we've already started developing some of that work with this year's budget cycle. The second strategy is to develop clear and powerful messaging that communicates FCPS's value to the community through diverse modes and venues of communication. We want to ensure that everyone understands the value that FCPS provides to the entire community. And then lastly, for resource stewardship, and I appreciate your patience as I've read through all of these, we have the desired outcome that FCPS will be accountable, responsible, and transparent with resources entrusted by the community. Our objective here is to maximize and align resources and communicate clearly with stakeholders. I guess I got ahead of the words there. Some of the strategies that we've outlined for this particular goal are to establish and adopt budget principles and policies that will guide the budget decision process, develop a methodology for measuring the academic return on investments for key programs and services, and lastly, to explore and review options to gather stakeholder feedback to enhance the decision-making process, including crowdsourcing. And if you're not familiar with crowdsourcing, it's an opportunity for us to get lots of feedback from the community, real-time feedback from the community, and put that feedback to good use as part of the budget process. So that's where we are with our four goal areas. And again, as Dr. Garza said earlier, these are just a few of the strategies that we've identified. So before we actually break up into groups, I believe that we have some questions around the table.
Kathy?
Could you just explain what phase means in the chart?
Sure. So in the chart, we understand that we're not going to be able to do all of these things at one time. So if we look at the entire lifetime of the strategic plan, whether it's three years, five years, we'll have to implement pieces of it at different times. So as we look at the different strategies that are developed, we'll look at some of those foundational strategies first and may include those in the first phase, and then look to see what makes the best sense in maybe a phase two or a phase three. So that gets us at that sense of timeline.
That's an important question. I'm glad you asked. Once we have all the strategies listed here, there'll be quite a number in each of these areas, and we've got to prioritize. You're right. And so we contemplate right now, there are probably three significant phased periods of time, phase one, two, and three, and it may even be, you know, more than one year in each of those phases. So once you all tell us at least that the sub-goals or objectives are in the right place and some of that wording is correct, then we'll continue to work on these strategies. And then after that, we'll have an opportunity to prioritize those which we think are the most important.
Any other questions? Okay. I guess seeing none, are we ready then to break up into groups, Marty?
We're ready to break up into groups. And so this is your time to provide input and really let us know what your thinking is about our thinking. And so with it, I think the best way for us to break up into groups is to simply go back to second grade, I was a second-grade teacher, and we'll just number off by fours.
By fours, alright.
And so what we'll do is, we still need four groups, and then as you go around the table, we can just add the additional two to some of the other groups.
Alright. Would you like me to start?
So, and one thing that we can also do, we do have the posters around the room, and I'm going to ask our champions if they will come and stand next to their posters. We've got Steve, who's going to stand next to student success, and Sloan's going to join. Kim and Jane Lipp are going to stand next to caring culture. I'm going to ask, Kristin is coming forward to stand next to resource stewardship. I'm going to ask Kathleen Crenshaw to come stand next to me at premier workforce. You all, you all have yellow stickies, and we have many more yellow stickies. As we move around the room, this will be a bit of a paper show. We've got all of our objectives and information is written up for you as you get to your group. We hope that you have yours with you. If you don't, we have everything posted there. We have a blank sheet with, that says strategies, but it will also be available to add any of your input around the desired outcomes or the objective. And so as you get to that sheet, we ask that each group go through one at a time, and we'll spend fifteen, twenty minutes at each station and work our way through until you get back to where you started. And then we'll ask that group of board members to present out some of the major trends that you see within your particular area. We're going to ask our facilitators to group the stickies together by trend area as board members go through. We've got Chris available with more stickies, if you need pink stickies for wordsmithing, or if you need more yellow stickies for adding lots of ideas.
And where do you want people to put the yellow stickies? Where, like, on the blank sheets?
We've got blank sheets right there, and so you'll just put your yellow stickies there, and we'll keep that listed for posterity and use that as we develop these strategies even deeper.
Okay. So is there a way to post the objectives and the goal so we can see them and then, but then have people, right? But then, but I think people are going to want to read what's on there and not have them obscured, right?
If you can find a blank wall, that would help.
If you can, if you can find a blank wall, we can do that.
And then people can see the goals.
Kristin, like, you'll have to probably go more into the corner there.
Yeah. Maybe you can find a wall and then you can, and then we can have the blank sheets next to it. Okay. And you had a question too.
People who are number one are going to which?
If you're number one, you're going to student success.
Okay, hold on. Number one is student success, number two is?
Is caring culture.
Caring culture, number three?
Is premier workforce.
Premier workforce, and number four?
Number four is resource stewardship.
Resources, and I'm assuming we just kind of grab chairs and move them?
You can grab chairs that are near your area and then pull those three chairs, two to three chairs to those particular areas, and we'll go there.
So you just want us to number off?
Just number off.
Alright, I'm one.
Two.
Yeah, we're doing four. Two.
Three.
Three. That's four. Okay. Okay, and if we get new people, they're three and four.
If Mr. Moon comes, he'll be three, and we'll move from there.
Alright, so everybody knows what number, again, number one is student, sure.
There should be two.
There are at least two people in each group.
I will add to one of the, we'll add to the smaller groups until the other board members are able to join you. So I'll add to one of them, and Marty can add to one. But, so you'll go to your first group, we'll spend about ten minutes, you'll have a facilitator there to capture your feedback on these objectives, the desired outcomes, and then strategies if you have feedback on strategies.
Okay. Okay. And you all will? Did you have a question? Oh, okay. Number one is student success.
Success, which is back in the corner where Steve is.
So if you're number one, your student is success, number two is caring culture, number three is premier workforce, and number four is resource stewardship. Does everybody know what group they're in? And Marty, you will tell us when time's up and where we're to move to.
Yes, and so we'll just move around clockwise around the table.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, I have to go like this. So Patty, if you have thoughts around the desired outcome or the objective, you put your thoughts on this yellow sheet, and we'll put it on the board here.
Ryan, you're missing a great picture.
That's for wordsmithing. If you want to add some wordsmithing, we'll put on additional ideas up there. Okay? Alright.
So what number is which?
That's group one. This is group two. This is group three, and that's group four.
Hey, I'm sorry to hear, and Dan is as well. We do and they do. So this one, Dan is covered.
Oh, you've got another, you've got the other.
Dan, you're here.
No, I'll go over there.
Dan is covered. Trying to find a water pitcher.
Let's bring that back over here. We're just going to kind of go through this one at a time, and if you have your, you can also take the rest back. Our first area is to recruit and retain high-quality employees, our student practices, developing standards, and expanding the candidate pool. So our desired outcome is that we'll maintain a workforce that feels highly valued, respected, and rewarded for its efforts. Are we on the right track with this particular goal? When we looked at the overall work that, we looked at the seventeen pieces that ECR developed for us in terms of the community feedback, we had a lot there about recruiting and retaining employees. We had information about compensation, we had some other areas. If we look at this particular area, do you have anything that you would like to add to this? Any first thoughts, second thoughts?
This is Dan's passion.
This is Dan's area.
You know, I didn't really see something, and they're pretty broad, and I think they connect all the dots in terms of the broad focus that we should have with them. Nothing came to mind.
No, I mean, I think that outcome and objective are fine.
And if you look at some of the strategies that we've listed there, is there, is there a strategy that you would like to add to this? We've developed many more strategies for this area, but we just gave you a small sample. Or if you have any questions about the two strategies that are currently listed under?
I've been struggling to be honest. I mean, I, what I see so far, it's like, I mean, I don't, nothing really immediately comes to mind as a, I don't know, so far I don't know what I can add to what's been done.
So, so in terms of passion around our employees and compensation and recruiting and trying to have the best employees, do you have any thoughts on graphics? Do you have any thoughts on?
So this is, that, that, I mean, drugs, I'm a little bit concerned. Do you, I mean, I think it's, you know, we struggle with that, we're going to struggle even more with that as our student population changes.
Right. And is there, obviously, we don't see everything here, but is there something to say that our employee pool should mirror our student population at all?
Not as specific as that.
Did you discuss something?
But we talked about increasing our diversity and looking at those demographics that aren't as, as well-represented in Fairfax County, and also thinking about where we're going to draw in terms of different schools. I think that we sometimes go to some of the same schools and having broadened the net.
Exactly. So we're going to announce right now, in fact, you see, that we're having, I'm looking at the aspect, we actually had a minority of recruits with advisory channel, moving to some of this last week, just starting, so we'll get that work up. Because now we do need to take more, a more targeted look at these candidates. So more attention to that, you know.
Does that, does that tie into, obviously, coming off campus, but number one source of employees, I assume you're going to notice that, I mean, people are coming after a couple of years somewhere else. I see a lot of Pennsylvanians coming down here, and I mean, so.
Prince Williams coming up, yeah.
Maybe so, I don't know. Then obviously, I've lost a ton of teachers, ten-plus years, and just to focus on people in front of them. I think it's, I think it's better to study and engage them and equip them to study. I'm struggling, importantly, to work to stay about looking, and I know, and you know, already, looking at the schools that you're going to, and the work that you're saying that are pulling from these schools, and the diversity thereof is such a part of it.
And a lot of the conversations that I've had around that, so, in talking to African-American teachers who may go on to other areas when they were teachers in my school, you know, they left because of a lot of, in terms of northern Virginia culture, not necessarily supporting church and other life for them, moved to Maryland. Other folks don't always feel comfortable being maybe the only one working in a building. And so I've made suggestions that we actually go to schools in the Midwest where there are African-Americans and other minority candidates who feel a bit more comfortable in, in an environment where there are small minorities, to me, in Virginia, isn't that much of a difference for them.
Riverine areas of, like Ohio, it's not really different, having grown up there.
Exactly.
Because those folks are there, it's comfortable.
But what happens when we, when we go to historically black colleges and universities?
Watching.
When you, when you bring, if you bring from southern areas, you have these large environments where it's majority African-American, you've got, it's simply as simple as where to get your haircut. And so if you have a larger community in Maryland that has to do that, well, I'm going to go work in Maryland, not move to Northern Kentucky. And enhancing those recruitment strategies around our Korean-American population, we've got many there, right? Which is, you know, a huge hub. We have a large Vietnamese population in the area, where we know to bring teachers in who understand the benefits of this area.
So, kind of, I'm going to run on that, is, when you talk about the diversity training, since cultural sensitivity training, is there going to be a focus on sensibles with that, or?
So, that would be across the board, so that would be in caring culture.
Oh, okay.
You can flesh that up with them a little more, but there will be a focus on this cultural competency for all of our employees, for our principals, for our teachers. We're currently engaged in that work through IS and parent outreach, Daryl, Craig, and Biller. So we'll be expanding that and making that a mandatory piece. It was, I'd say, twenty, twenty-five years ago, we had mandatory cultural diversity training in Fairfax County, and we haven't done it. I arrived twenty years ago, and just after all of this training, so you had all these teachers talking about the sessions and talking about the value in these sessions, and so in twenty years, I haven't received any kinds of training around culture.
That's really, I didn't, I really didn't recognize any of that, because particularly given the diversity of the last, last twenty years, it's been like an escalator up, and it's not really the diversity zoom, it's not.
Well, I, you know, we've known that this has been happening to us, but we haven't had.
I was looking at the numbers this weekend. In 2004, we were at sixty-six percent white. Now we're at forty percent white, so it's.
Even within that, you know, folks from East Africa, West Africa, you know, Asian, and masses, you know, it's not just even, you know, the traditional diversity. So we, I see that as a part, but I think the candidate pool is obviously a critical part in getting to the place where that's what's up. I think we don't, PG County is a huge source of potential high-quality candidates for us. I think we don't... PG County is a huge source of potential high-quality candidates. At least for my area, a lot of folks commute over because housing costs in PG County are less than here. And wages here are higher than in PG County. So we may be losing some of that battle now. Because PG County is more competitive with us wage-wise. It's a large population. To me, that's a way of recruiting locally.
One of the things we're doing on our recruitment is actually scheduled to be in our Colleges of Education at Howard University to sort of bridge that gap. Because sometimes it's just getting a better understanding of what we have to offer. Because there can be perceptions out there. So we're a little bit more directed and more directed.
There are perceptions that everyone has about Fairfax that we have no quality. That we only have one-time students. And so why would I want to go work in Fairfax? Because they're not going to value my... They don't need my input. And I don't want to work with all high-achieving students. Who would that... Who's that at all?
I couldn't agree more with that. In fact, what we hear, particularly in Richmond, Iowa, in some of your schools, is you need people who really can connect better with kids. They aren't. So national board-certified teachers are great teachers, but they don't necessarily connect with kids because that may not really depend on a child. They want to teach kids who have a lot more needs and have a lot more support than they need. You hear that, and you talk to the schools, and you talk to the teachers. They'll... Some of the best teachers are national board certified teachers in some way in the schools.
And they can connect with kids.
They can connect with kids, and that's... So I would encourage and support them.
Now, we have several big teachers in Fairfax who are board certified.
One quick question I have is on recruiting for high-needs areas. Are we currently filling our positions? Is there... Do we need to do a better job of incentives in that area?
I think that's something we're looking at in terms of do we want to give a little bit of company for areas where we know we have a difficult time retaining teachers? So I know that one of them...
Definitely want that on there, thank you. It's more stability incentives of sorts, you know? And one of the major issues that... Every time we talk to Nora, she brings it up, is that she gets first dibs on teachers such as can bring some in, but they stay a year or two, and then they live all the way in western side of county and...
So one strategy that we've identified that we didn't list is that we'd like to change our regulations to state that in your first three years of employment, you're not going anywhere.
That's one of these like proposed actions.
You are in your school. You're going to have professional development. And you can't then get all this professional development and then go to a different school. And we need to create consistency within schools. We need to create consistency for the staff, consistency for the principals, so that he or she has people who are on the same page, they're in line with the vision, and consistency for families and students. So they understand that these teachers are here with us, they believe in us, and that my teacher will leave at the end of the year because she's going or he's going closer to home.
That's great, thank you. So compensation packages, I don't know which one of you guys, these were on. I just... I'm having a tougher time fitting... I guess it's maybe what I did and how I pulled this out. Because what you're asking for really is kind of bizarre outcome and objectives.
You can go over each of them. So going back to this, we're going to entice and retain employees. And we're going to provide compensation packages by reviewing practices, developing data programs, and increasing employee understanding of compensation.
I think that's critical. Most people don't understand, particularly with our retirement organs, they don't understand that.
With retirement, with your health benefits, with your professional development. Professional development is a benefit. And people don't see professional development as a benefit. So when you look at your compensation for your statement, it will show we've added this much value to you as a professional. And if you leave us, you'll be able to take that value that we've added to you and use it anywhere else in the world.
And putting a dollar amount to it, I think does speak volumes.
Putting a dollar amount to it speaks volumes. So people understand that. So it's not just about my salary. It's not just about my benefits. And people don't know how much Fairfax County is actually paying for the benefits. They see their portion, but they don't understand that Fairfax County has a portion as well.
I would say the other part of this that I don't necessarily see, and I know in essence it will be part of it, is the flexibility. It's almost flexible benefit plan kinds of choices that people have for different steps, different steps and stages of their life. You know, if you are a teacher, you need money more than you need retirement benefits because you have costs and you have family obligations, et cetera. And we don't kind of one-size-fits all with respect to retirement. I don't know what... That's more of a, maybe, a specific strategy, but maybe it's key word in flexibility, flexibility.
So, and Susan, I've had lots of thoughts on this.
Life cycle.
Where you have flexibility with sort of cafeteria approach to your benefits packages. You slide the bar as you need it. So at the beginning of my career, I might need more cash and not focus on retirement as much. And then as I go through my career, I can slide the bar. Fewer dollars for cash, more towards being able to designate where those dollars go. Any feedback around the desired outcome or the objective?
No, that's good.
We have about five minutes. So this is investing in broken leadership opportunities for all employees. This is the professional development piece. By assessing needs, developing consistent professional development structures, and expanding access. One thing that we don't have for all of our employees now is professional development support. We would think that all of our employees get some type of PD, but they don't. So this is, while you would think, well, that just sort of seems like a new winner, for us to actually do this is very big. So there are four strategies in this area because expanding PD to everybody is...
See, what's not obvious when I read that is all... So maybe there's some, but it wasn't there in...
So is that all employees?
I get it okay, but same old way I've always looked at our employees, to not understand that.
We could add a to employees and put some of the categories of employees that we wouldn't normally think of.
I think some kind of way of... Because I don't... I think about it...
So to emphasize support areas, because it's basically our support areas that we're talking about. We get the sense that our administrators and teachers are engaged in professional development, but we don't necessarily think that our best rivalries are cafeteria folk or IAs.
I was going to go to Sierra Azon, which is where I was going to go next. I was shocked that I have a new... I'll bring myself to another section of the team. I was shocked that we have new... I'm not going to say the name of the school on that, but we have a new, apparently, liaison. Brand-new, have kids in another school, and it's familiar to think that a new person hired in a rotten job that no training had come from. There's no professional development on the ground. There's no way, and there's no training manual. There's really no... There's no way this person can be successful as quickly as they could at eighteen. It's meant to be needed support. But what I understand is it's not going to happen. So that's more specific. I realize that, but the core of it is I do that for teachers.
So what we do here is that we conduct that comprehensive needs assessment. Identify what employees need to go and be able to do in order to be successful in their current role. And I think that we switch that. And we develop jobs to get a professional development plan that outlines learning targets for the position while also providing for those individual needs. So we find out what the needs are, and then we develop the PD to support it. So you're exactly right.
I would be... To me, that's not as correct as what the... Especially with us, which is how do we bring the needs for teachers? What do we have for the whole semester planning? What do we do to ensure essential order of staff?
You're talking about employee organization and development programs.
Yeah, it's really, particularly for non-traditional positions like early Azon. It's so different what people are doing compared to an IA or anybody else. We might have some...
And then lastly, we have... Improve HR practices to provide greater clarity and fairness to equity for all employees. And some of the areas to do that are to revise our current regulations for improved clarity and accessibility. Develop customer service standards to enhance the overall employee experience. Assessing HR services and products. I know that HR is already a new agency in that work. And then developing this sense of the employee handbook, so...
You said I have one for my business. It's like twenty pages.
We don't have an employee handbook.
I just, when I saw it, I went, there isn't. We have all these policies and regulations, and there's some...
And so what do I need to know most as an employee? What... Instead of having to go through and search the resume? So where is an employee handbook? Either you like to enter this area?
The structure for the fairness and equity is already... I realize it's this... Equity and fairness office. But that's not outside of HR. That's been rolled into... This is kind of tough to navigate. I'm looking at this kind of... In some degree, I didn't stretch it in my brain properly.
So what this does is that this is your first attempt. So you're getting to the other groups that you're already thinking of. Now I have a better sense. But what you've actually provided us compared to the... I have this wall of the world that I've been in for the past... So I can certainly see how what you shared is unique. So I think it's been... From my perspective, your input has been... And we weren't asking for anything more than that. When we come back at the end, we'll have the draft plan with the instructors.
Where do we go next?
We're going to move to resource check. So let's close down our thoughts on this last topic so that we can move to the next area.
Pass. Need a bell.
What do you need the bell?
Yes. All right. So, yeah, Ted, so we're going here. And where's... Okay, Megan's here. Okay, all right. That was good. We were able to contribute. We didn't get Megan over. Okay. Yes, all right, okay.
Come over, Ted, can I see? Slide over a little bit. We want Megan sit there. Come on to the group, Megan.
Okay, so this is... Got to get my head around premier workforce.
So this is premier workforce. So this is all about ensuring that we have the best workforce in the area.
Which we already do.
Which we already do. But then also, that workforce has to understand that we want to keep them here. They have to feel valued. And that we have to provide an appropriate level of compensation. There's a whole shift with this area when we think about compensation. Compensation is more than just your paycheck. So compensation is more than just your paycheck. Compensation is the benefits we provide. Compensation is the professional development that we provide. So there are so many more things to think about. First and foremost, we want to recruit and retain high-quality employees by reviewing our practices and developing standards and expanding the candidate pool, our current candidate pool. Some of the strategies that... So before we get to the strategies, what we get there, do you have any feedback about this particular desired outcome or the objective?
Right.
And expand the candidate pool. Go ahead.
I like the desired outcome when I like the objective. One is the objective in terms of claims. So one is our outcome is that we want the workforce to feel highly valued, respected, and rewarded. But then the objective is about recruiting, retaining high-quality employees.
Reviewing practices, developing standards.
Expanding the candidate pool. So that, the objective, I think, is admirable. Here's what I'm trying to, here's my initial thoughts on it and then see if anybody can help me through it or maybe you can.
So, maintain workforce that feels highly valued, respected, and rewarded for its efforts. And when we think about that retaining piece for retaining those employees, this is a key piece of it. So, recruiting is one thing where you go out and you find folks and bring them here and you bring the right people here. But in retaining people, if I'm going to say, the reason why I've been here for twenty years is that I feel highly valued, respected, and rewarded for my efforts in the county. If I didn't feel that way, I would have gone a long time ago to another jurisdiction. But I didn't because the feedback that I've gotten, the professional development that I've gotten, makes me feel like I'm highly valued. Makes me feel respected and rewarded for my efforts. So, that keeps me.
Right. And that's what research shows.
But what's missing in the desired outcome is it's not just that we want the workforce to feel highly valued, respected, and rewarded. We want it to be, as you've seen the objective, a high-quality, a high-quality workforce. Because premier workforce is saying that's a value we have for that. And so, the goal maybe is part of.
So, is it something that, like we usually think, maintain a high.
Yeah, I was saying, yes, we maintain a high-quality workforce.
So, get a pink sheet and add that to it.
Right.
And we will add that.
Cause then I think you get, but we want a high-quality workforce that feels this way.
So, FCPA is mainly called a high-quality workforce that feels, uh, we may be able to find another adjective there and start tallying.
A high-quality.
High-quality workforce that feels valued, respected, and rewarded for its efforts.
Okay.
Let's put this right.
I can tear it.
And so, then the objective is to recruit, retain high-quality employees by reviewing practices, developing standards, and expanding our pool.
Okay.
Some of the pieces that we've already, well, that were recommended by the, were to, uh, engagement recruitment study and analysis of schools. We're already doing that. And when we talk about analysis of schools, that's where are we going to recruit potential teacher for Fairfax County? Are we just going to the same schools that we've gone to in the past?
Universities.
Universities. Are we going to the same universities? Have we expanded? Uh, I shared earlier that, uh, that when we look at, at bringing, at expanding the diversity of our workforce, if we go to historically black colleges and universities, we might bring those individuals here, but once they get here, they're not staying because they don't feel like they're part of a larger community. If I'm, if I've been empowered in an environment of all African-Americans and I come to a school where I'm maybe one of two African-Americans, I might then decide to move to St. George's County or Washington DC because I feel like I'm part of a community. And so, one of the recommendations, recommendations that I had is that we go to some midwestern schools and recruit African-American, Hispanic, and Asian teachers who are already, feel like they're part of the community, of a diverse community.
They felt a little more assimilated to a multicultural.
And so, in coming to Fairfax County, they.
They have a similar experience.
They have a similar experience.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting point. Cause we tend, right, we tended to be in the other direction. The other question, recruitment study, what about internationally? As, as we're talking about recruitment studies, international recruitment as well because as we become more international. And then, then we also have a credit, we have, we have all kinds of barriers, but.
The cost of trying to recruit international students, when we have an unemployment rate of over six percent in the country, we don't need to be going and recruiting international teachers.
Well, I guess my question is.
They already actually go to American universities.
Well, I, well, that's, that's my question.
You could put them at Amer- at American University.
Yeah, I know. Cause we've got, as we're looking at multiple languages, as we meet multiple cultures, particularly Hispanic countries, cultures, I don't know. I mean, that, cause that's a barrier to us as we are trying to get certification among that population.
Well, you know.
Yeah. Not necessarily going somewhere, but they're already here.
It's a very interesting, um, topic to be looking at this one considering Montgomery County article that Donna St. George just wrote, um, over the weekend. And then, get a report saying that we don't have a diverse, you know, instructional force. And, and, you know, the question, you know, the reaction I got at my TA meeting on Friday was, we, we always want to diversify our workforce, especially in the classroom. But in the end, you've got to focus on, you want high-quality teachers for that. So, if there are things that we need to do to enhance our recruitment processes, that's fantastic. But like Jenny saying, would we go to Latin America and start trying to find Spanish-speaking?
Or certification of people who are already here. I mean, that's, that's usually our issue is the folks are already here, but the, and that's not our problem, it's a state problem, it's a federal problem. Um, but it's partnering with usually graduate schools then for people who are already here, highly educated from other countries, already living here, are interested in working for some teaching, but it's then getting them certified in some reasonable amount of time.
So, expand our international, or.
Certification partnership.
Expand our efforts to, uh, to increase the presence of international teachers.
Or certification process, yeah. It's, cause it, cause I think our, our issues are more with being able to, in a timely way, help people to become certified here who are already here.
Basically the goal that we're talking about, multilingual, I mean.
Multilingual, multi-ethnic.
I'm worried about hearing international because I don't want to send a message to the system, oh, we'd like to bring some people from Romania or, no, we're talking about that we have a various, we're ever increasing population of Hispanic students and we see the value of having multilingual teachers. But again, then you go to the issue of what's the next most predominant language we have in our culture? And are we, cause we have a hundred and seventy languages.
So, let's think about this last one. And so, if we think about this, we've talked about cultural competence.
Right.
And cultural competence goes across.
Right.
Everyone, yeah.
Many different factors. There's race, there's ethnicity, there's this whole, this internationalization.
Right.
So, if we're looking at the sense of cultural competence.
Right.
We would like to expand our pool of teachers with a high level of cultural competence.
Yes.
And it could be for, so, if I'm, uh, if I grew up in, in El Salvador and I'm a highly qualified teacher in the United States, I might be able to bring a bit of cultural competence around.
Right, right, exactly.
That experience.
Yeah.
And so, if we, what if we talk about then ensuring that we have culturally competent teachers.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, I'm much.
Well, yeah, cause I was gonna say, in, in, in my schools, there will be Indian, Pakistani, highly educated people here who want to teach here.
So, recruiting teachers from a variety of cultures?
Yes.
So, it's less that international?
No, yeah, we're not recruiting, it's, right, exactly. And helping them to become certified so they can actually teach. And they may be brilliant and be a PhD in another country.
So, you're saying, um, strategy is, uh, certification outreach?
Often it's certification is.
So, recruit teachers from a variety of cultures and support.
With improved certification strategy?
Or with partnerships with.
And we're looking at that.
Yeah, I know we are.
Cause we know that.
George Mason and.
He can be a fluent Spanish speaker.
Right.
But we're gonna require that you get an undergraduate degree.
Yeah.
Plus, the language.
Right, yeah.
So, we're partnering, and we're partnering with George Mason University.
Right, exactly.
To see if we can get some cohorts.
Exactly.
So that we can, um, have a shorter program. That's a, that's a long period of time to get an undergraduate degree along with the language.
And that's the problem, yeah. Cause we've already got people with the cultural competence who are living here who would like to work in our schools, teach our kids, but the length of time that it takes for them to be certified under state and federal law is long.
So, and partnering with universities for alternative certification.
Yeah, that's it. Exactly. That's, that was really what I was getting at. Cause I, I see that.
And then we'll create something around alternative certification.
That's right, that's right. It's like Ryan's wife. It's like Shuann who could teach for us. Cause she could get past the, yeah.
And, and so, and so if that were our priority, when we think about the board's priorities, we'd be working very closely then with, you know, Michael going down and advocating on our behalf.
That's right.
So that we don't have to, you know, hire teachers with educational degrees.
That's right.
In our immersion programs because we've lost.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
It's been so hard for us to find teachers, immersion teachers.
Yes.
Who have certification, but don't have the full degree.
That's right. Cause they're looking for, right, the new laws are requiring, and yet they've done a fabulous job for us sometimes for fifteen years, but they are no longer.
Yeah, we're some experienced teachers.
Yeah, we're losing experienced teachers with this certification.
Yeah, I think the other thing though is I would want to see us being a leader in, with our Virginia, you know, public universities to, to say, well, how can we better prepare these candidates and these, you know, students graduating out of our public universities to be these twenty-first century teachers? In other words, you know, I think out of graduating with an education degree and you want to be teaching public schools, why aren't they, uh, requiring them to be, uh, language proficient? Like my son Jimmy at Georgetown, he's gonna have to be language proficient to graduate for the degree. I want to have that when I graduate from Penn. I'm not hearing that some of our, George Mason requires a language proficiency to get your bachelor's.
I, well, I'm, I'm really talking about the first.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, cause I'm losing teachers.
At the natural level, as we're trying to improve our workforce, another strategy isn't just getting people, you're talking about who are.
Right, I see what you're referring to. Yeah, it's working with, right, with, with our teacher preparation schools in, in.
Right. You know, our undergraduate education program or, I mean, I just.
So, they are also culturally competent.
Not just culturally competent.
Yeah, linguistically.
Let's move on to this area because we want to get through, we want your input as many as we can because we have to move. We've been fifteen minutes here.
All right, okay.
Uh, let's look at competitive compensation packages. So, we're going to entice and retain employees by becoming a leader in overall compensation practices and portfolios.
Yeah, and to provide competitive compensation packages by.
We're going to review, um, current practices, we're going to develop, by reviewing current practices, developing innovative programs, increasing employment and understanding true compensation.
Right, so that they, right.
And this whole sense of true compensation is a new, uh, way of helping employees understand their values.
Okay, so this is, this is what we are doing to help employees understand, cause, yeah.
We need to do the same thing over there with the resource stewardship and make sure that the supervisors understand.
That's right, that's right, yeah. Cause I mean, we, we have done, we've attempted to do compensation package studies before where the school board has looked at it. I guess what we're saying is that we've not done this as a package for employees for they understand.
Right, so this is, so this is a total compensation study. Are we paying our employees? Are our employees classified in the right areas? So, we've got teachers that, if we look at across the board, are our classifications on par with classifications in the region?
Right.
Or with like-sized listeners?
Cause we've done some of these studies in the past, but it's been a while so that I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, cause I have studies from years.
Well, for example, when you say true compensation, one thing that I remember in talking to my peers then of FDA was some of our benefits are more generous than our salaries. So, if you just went salary to salary, we look less competitive. But if you take total compensation package.
Right, so.
We actually might be right on par, but we look like we're losing all the time on the bar chart.
If we spell out, see right now, when you give your statement, you see how much you're paying into VRS and how much you're paying into ERFC, but you're not understanding the benefit or the value of what you're paying in. So, especially with our younger employees.
But they don't, yeah, they don't understand. And, and every time we negotiate a different benefit package, the study needs to be updated. And part of our problem in getting to an apples-to-apples is that Montgomery County has a different package, the county has a different package, we have a different package. Is that what I'm saying? Cause then, cause every time we, every time we contract for health benefits, this needs to be redone, exactly, yeah.
Well, and so, and this helps us understand, are we, are we competitive in the market?
Right, yeah.
How do we explain that to employees? Cause one thing, our last, the last time our benefits package changed, employees had to pay a bit more and so there was, teachers were upset about that.
Right.
But if you look at your overall compensation, you're still better off with a Fairfax County paycheck and benefit plan with a mini-family or a family plan than you would be if you moved to Arlington County with a higher salary. Your benefits may not be as, as.
That's what I was just saying.
Professional development.
Definitely.
Your professional development.
Yeah. It's, it all has to be spelled out because again, that's, that's.
Yes, so within the statement, what's the value of your professional development?
Right.
Because that's a value add to your professionalism.
Right.
And, yeah, how, we have.
I think we got this one. Let's move.
So, no, I have a question. So.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that I've heard is that.
Three-minute warning.
The way that, the way that it works right now for your retirement is you've got to put in, what is it, twenty-five, thirty years or whatever?
Twenty-five years.
So, have, have.
For Fairfax County.
One of the things that I'm wondering about is, there are other workplace settings where people can invest in their retirement at five-plus years, ten-plus years. So, let's say you, you had ten or fifteen years of, of energy and passion to teach and then you burn out. I hear teachers are saying, I've got another fifteen years to go. Those are not the teachers who want to continue going through their years. They're, they're done. But they stick around because they, they feel like they've got to be able to. Has anyone looked at or identified where you can invest? And so, you can, you, just like at other companies, you did your five, ten, fifteen years, you leave, but when you hit retirement age, you had that amount of vested.
So, you need to get Michael to get the, to find a contribution plan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's portable.
Cause in a defined contribution plan, we take the money with you.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that's a strategy we need to.
Yeah, cause that's a TIA craft.
Let's go back here and talk about defined contributions.
Yeah, it's a very different. You just don't like this. That's, that's, that's a portable, yeah. And that's, that's where you're more conservative.
I'll put it out. I, I knew Jenny, when I'm telling.
We need to talk about.
I'll give you an example. When I was at Georgetown, I was there for three years, but I vested, I had a four-to-one match.
Yes, you were in a defined contribution plan.
Right, but what I'm saying is they.
Yes, that's a TIA craft, that's right.
I had a four-to-one match when I was at Georgetown.
Right.
And, but I didn't have to stay at Georgetown.
Exactly.
That's right.
And so.
Exactly.
It could end up being beneficial for teachers.
That's right.
So, you're actually not thinking it's totally free.
Well.
No, it's very controversial. You understand this is very controversial.
Well, that's why we need to be having models of others.
But we talked about in the last group, we talked about allowing employees to sort of shift their compensation over the lifetime of their career.
Right.
And a new teacher, I might need more cash.
That's right.
So, my salary might be a little higher and it's paying less toward my retirement benefits.
Right.
But as I, as I am getting closer to retirement, I might elect to move more of that into retirement.
Right, yeah. All right, so those, those are non-traditional.
You know, I don't know if it's at this table or that one, but, um, I want to look at VRS and whether our obligation to.
So, we're going, we're going to shift because we want to stay within timeframe. How much time do you need over there, Kim? You're good?
The good news is I like the other one.
One or two minutes?
So, do you have any things you want to change on the other one?
Well, that's why we need to be having models of others.
But we talked about in the last group, we talked about allowing employees to sort of shift their compensation over the lifetime of their career.
Right.
And a new teacher, I might need more cash.
That's right.
So my salary might be a little higher, and it's paying less toward my retirement benefits. But as I, as I am getting close to retirement, I might elect to move more of that into retirement.
Right, yeah, so those, those are non-traditional.
You know, I don't know if it's at this table or that one, but, um, I want to look at VRS and whether our obligation to VRS...
So we're going, we're going to shift because we want to stay within timeframe? How much time do you need over there, Kim? You're good?
The good news is I like the other one.
One or two minutes?
So do you have any things you want to change on the other one?
How good, how are you over there? One or two minutes?
Invest in growth and shift from...
We didn't get through all of ours because we had a very rousing discussion?
Well, I was gonna say the third one.
If you have any feedback for us at all, put it on the sticky, and we'll add it to it, because you're going to report it on that before you're done, right?
Good job.
By assessing professional development structures and expanding access to professional development.
Great, alright.
This last one...
Oh, the last one?
The certification, the flexibility. Well, there are various forms, depending on what area you're wanting to teach, biology or...
Fairness and equity.
Um, with the concern that they build a score, required was too high. I, I would challenge that.
I agree, it does become more challenging.
You agree? It is challenging. I'm going to see if I can ding the bell here.
There's, um, yeah, what I'm...
Go along, get the rest of them.
He's second, he's first one, he's graduated. No, I mean, he's graduated, he's now a freshman. He looks hard to go out there. Love. He's looking at his daughter right now. My sister was in the conversation, she's not special.
So who doesn't put all the information together? I know you're...
Okay, let's move around to the next station.
I mean, it was, it was Diane, I mean, because this is the kid, like I said, she died.
No husband, no children, just gonna go hang out.
Yeah, it's making it small. Yeah, so, um, so, um, we're all, all, we're all thinking about, are now a second...
Now, where do you see my daughter?
Um, it's, but I need to go south, he's in the last room, it's, it's... All the employees are there.
Okay. Sandy and Tammy?
Clemson is, uh, really, um, kind of less than zero.
Are you in this group?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, he's got friends who are there, so he's gonna... Thanks, guys. Thanks, Marty.
You're welcome.
Do you need us to come pay attention?
Tammy and Sandy, you want to come join us?
So I couldn't say that, Sandy. I'm happy.
So here we are, Premier Workforce.
One second, I have to sidebar. And then we're gonna take... Oh, it's not ready, oh, yeah. I don't need to talk, I just need to, you know, level heads about it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're at Premier Workforce, and we have some input from other groups that we'll share with you as we go through. As you can see, this, uh, we've gone to the goals earlier. We had a recommendation from the last group that FCPS is going to maintain a high-quality workforce that feels, perhaps not highly valued, but we have to think of another adjective there, respected and rewarded for its efforts. The objective is to recruit and retain high-quality employees by reviewing practices and developing standards and practices. We have to do this because it's, the stick has...
They've chose not to stick anymore?
Oh, by expanding the candidate. And some of the strategies, let's go back to the, to our desired outcome and our objective.
Can I ask you why you use the word feels rather than is? I'm sorry. Why, why would you choose the word feels rather than is?
So, is valued is from our perspective.
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah.
So we can say that, I can say that, you know, I value you, Tammy, as the chair of our board, but that's my perspective. Unless you feel that we value you, then...
You wanted it from the staff perspective, I see.
So this is from the staff perspective, is that...
Feels, okay, I thought that might be valid, alright, I just wanted to get clarity here.
I don't, I think it's a good high quality, but there are almost all kinds of things.
Yeah, you should just say that they're valued, why don't we just go ahead and just cross that out?
So you're, you're agreeing with high quality?
So we're just...
I mean, I don't care if people want it, it's...
A high-quality workforce.
Oh, a high-quality workforce.
Right, you don't want highly valued, so it's just a value, you're saying. If you don't modify respect and reward it, you don't need to do value.
And that was from our little pink sheet from... So some of the additional strategies that people have talked about, uh, is undergoing a recruitment study, doing an analysis of our universities where we are normally recruiting students, and wondering if we need to expand that, sort of broaden the net, so to speak. So we've talked about the truth of pay for high-needs schools, in order to incentivize teachers.
Well, can I comment on that?
Sure.
That strategy worries me, and it is in the teachers' association, and they don't like that. It's my understanding that the project of building schools is not worth it. I think incentivizing people to come to a high-needs school, we're not meant to do that. And I say that...
I, I share your concerns, that I think people want to work places where the leadership is strong, and I worry that we make it about money. I mean, that's what you're saying.
That's, I'm, I'm saying...
Yeah, I share that concern.
If you have a student body with high needs or whatever, whatever, they, they are, you just incentivize the pay to do a... That the right person, you need to get people who want more money to come in, to be there for those individuals, those things, and their, their cornucopia of needs.
And so I think in the, the way that it was written, it was actually more general than pay, wasn't it? Did you say incentive, which, so incentive can be something that...
Yeah, offer incentives are critical, meaning hard, but so...
Well, these are additional, these are additional.
These are, these are additional, so these are just things that we would...
Right now, we just said these two.
And we have many more underneath that.
Oh, and so they, the other group added that, yes.
We did them on stickies, but they did them on here.
Oh, they, so they, they violated the rule.
This is what the other group...
I see.
So the other group added to do this, to recruit teachers from a variety of cultures, when we think about cultural competency, uh, to provide ultimate certifications for these teachers who may not, who may be, uh, who may have a dual language, but not necessarily have the full certification, and to expand our partnerships with public universities around teacher training programs.
And I guess going back to that incentive, I mean, I do think that we need to be sure that we draw excellent teachers to high-needs schools, you know, I feel deeply about that. Maybe we need to have a broader statement here about how to do that.
When we get into the next category, we'll just move this up, and we'll talk about competitive compensation packages. One of the pieces is helping teachers understand that compensation is more than just money.
So can we wait? I, I know, but I, I think we were talking here about the high-needs piece.
And so when we think about, this is incentive pay.
Yeah.
But as we've said, we want to incent, uh, provide incentives for teachers, it may not necessarily be...
So I feel like we need a comment, that some of us have a concern about that strategy.
Right, not a start.
Yeah, I think, you know, you need to put that down there, what the, and, and maybe another thing would be to say to... I mean, basically, you talk to the teachers about what would draw them to the high-needs schools, you know, is it pay?
There need...
One strategy that we haven't listed, uh, when we look at a lot of teachers who get to high-needs schools, they get there.
Yes, and they burn out.
Well, or they leave very quickly.
Yes.
And we provide professional development for them.
Because they get extra professional development, so they take, they go one or two years, and then they go somewhere else.
So one thing that we're looking at is, uh, for review hires, that once you're hired into any position, you stay with them at the school for three years.
And I...
It creates consistency for the school, it creates consistency for professional development, it creates consistency for students and families.
So there's... I'm gonna add that as a sticky note, I was just saying, the, the incentive to stay, because, you know, a lot of my schools don't have as much of a problem getting the teachers there, is what you said, it's, it's keeping them. It's, you know, and what my principal is telling me is...
But you also want to go on that, incentive pay is not...
It's not at the...
That is a question. It's questionable, and then you need to reach out to teachers, maybe we can have a conversation, right?
So here's what I hear you saying, Tammy, is that you need to know what the true connection is to keep teachers in a school.
Oh, there you go, yeah.
Not that...
Right.
Pay's not necessarily going to get you the right teachers.
Right.
So we need to see an analysis or something done to say what is really going to keep teachers at the schools. And we have a concern that pay, there's, we don't see a connection between pay and bringing the right people to the job. Should I just write it like that?
Well, I was starting to write it out, but explore with teachers about what is needed. I mean, am I getting, heading in the right direction here?
So identify the factors that contribute to teachers...
Yeah, why did you write?
Remaining, for, identify factors, um...
That draw teachers to high-needs schools?
That draw teachers to high-needs schools, and...
And have them stay?
And, uh, and have them stay. So identify those factors, and we can create, we can create the environment.
Right.
For teachers to then stay at those schools.
And I guess we need to express our, you know, our, our questions about whether pay is, you know, is pay.
I'm gonna write on your concern, concern about employee being the correct factor.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I just had a thought as you were talking about that. So here's the reality, as, you know, as a school board member, you go in, you see a school, you see the staff, and you realize in some schools, the leadership has provided a diverse workforce, and in other schools, the leadership has not. So if we, this is part of this, having a diverse workforce in each of our schools?
Yes.
Because then I think there needs to be a strategy around, uh, training the leadership to do that, or an expectation that the leadership does that, because I think that's where our inconsistency is. Because it's been fascinating to me, depending on who you walked in, what the employee group looked like.
And we do have a strategy where we talk about ensuring that we expand our demographics, so that we have that diverse workforce in our schools. We can add that, use that in all of our schools, so if you add that diverse workforce in all schools...
That's a good point.
But the piece that needs to be, the expectation for the leadership to be...
And it's not just, it's not just the system overall, it's...
Let us hire, understand how to, so it, it all, it all works together, because you have to recruit. You have to go places where you haven't gotten teachers before, so you have to recruit.
You have to have pool.
You have, have to have a pool. Once you have a pool, then you direct principals by training them to go to the pool, and not to go to my, this pipeline that I have in Pennsylvania.
Exactly.
Where I've been getting teachers, you know, that would be a good study, to see where our teachers have graduated, and doing overlay, uh, to see where we're getting most of our... We have a Pennsylvania pipeline.
There used to be in New York, too, I remember, years ago, okay. Read that and see if it makes sense.
Marty, can we read that so they can hear it?
Okay, so this is, um, we want to ensure, we have a diverse workforce in all, all of our schools, and help school leadership with the skills and tools they need to accomplish this.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, okay. Now, in this, this area, the, and this is probably in the, some of the strategies that, that we just haven't outlined yet, but I think one of the things that we need to be thinking about is, um, the compensation package, and, and are there alternatives to that, and I don't know what those would be, but I don't think it, anyway.
So what we need to do is, to provide compensation packages by reviewing current practices, developing innovative programs, and increasing employee understanding of true compensation.
Right.
This is really want employees to know that your, your value in Fairfax County is more than just your salary, that there is a benefits piece to that.
Right.
Our employees don't understand that what they see, what they pay for benefits doesn't pay for their entire benefits. They don't know what the, the gap that Fairfax County closes. They're not aware that their professional development is a benefit, that, uh, as an employee, Fairfax County is adding value to me as an employee, and if I chose to leave at any time, I take all of that training with me. That's a benefit. But our employees don't see it that way, so they understood what the true cost of that professional development was for them.
Okay, so, so that helps, because I was confused when I read that strategy, because I thought when Kevin North was here, we started providing, and tell me if we're not, because I thought we were, benefit statements to employees, so they saw not just their salary, but what it costs for their benefits. Are we doing that, or not?
We don't currently do that.
Alright, so I'm really not happy, because I remember when we had tough budget times, we, we said that was the answer.
That your pay stub shows how much you pay. So what, what the employee sees is sort of the salary, and then all the flippings that are taken out. And so the complaints you hear is that, look at all that Fairfax County takes out of my salary, but they don't see that, well, look at all that Fairfax County is giving you.
Well, I mean, this father's making, I thought we were doing it for years.
No, we're not doing that.
And, and I understand what you're doing there, and I support doing that, you know, making it clear to employees, and I agree, it would be good if we did it that way. I think they should also be at least thinking about it. Is there a different mix? You know, is there a different...
And that's what the compensation study is about, is that compensation...
Compensation study, remember?
The compensation study will get us at that.
Because, yes.
That's what does that.
That just says it's compared to other schools.
But within that, we've also got, um, this whole idea of offering flexible benefit plans on different cycles, and so if I'm a first-year teacher, I might elect to have more of my salary, or more of my compensation go towards salary.
Right.
And less toward retirement, but as I move through, if there's a bar, sort of a sliding bar, I might then shift that bar more toward the retirement end, have more of my compensation go into retirement.
And that's what I was getting at, so was that something that the other group added there?
So that, based on your life cycle, and then this whole idea of deferred compensation plans. That you put your pay into a plan, and you elect where it goes, and then you invest it, and when you leave, you take it with you.
And when we get to the meeting this afternoon about the budget, one of the strategies is to do a compensation study, and then that will move to, should we have some changes in it?
Yes.
So those things are...
So do you think this is already captured, because I had read, is that already captured?
Review alternate compensation packages, um, to, to current practices, as part of the compensation study.
So that would be...
But it doesn't hurt to put that in, yeah.
Because that compensation... Because that compensation study strategy is broad, and within that, there'll be more specifics.
Okay, all right.
We've got about two minutes. Let's get through this one.
Oh, this is the professional development.
And this is a hard one, because I don't know where we're going with all this.
So with professional development, right now, in Fairfax County, all of our employees do not receive professional development. We think about our teachers and our administrators, they receive professional development, but our support employees don't receive regular professional development. And not all of our teachers are actively engaged in professional development.
Yes.
And so we need to ensure that we have professional development programs for all of our teachers. So if you look at this second, we would actually need to switch these, because you first do the comprehensive needs assessment to identify what employees need to know and be able to do in order to be accessible in their current roles. Then you develop the PD plans so that teachers can have access, that all staff can have access to professional development. And that's, again, when you talk about how all of these things work together, PD is part of your compensation. And right now, we can't say that PD is part of your compensation, because it doesn't go to everyone.
Right.
Until, until it goes to everyone, it's not, it can't be measured.
And the one thing that, when I first read this, that I felt wasn't explicit in it, it's probably implied, is having the teachers say what they feel they need.
And so that's that, that's the comprehensive, that's the needs assessment.
That's the needs assessment, the second one.
Right, so teachers would be able to say, I need help in this skill or that skill.
What employees need to know. To me, that sounds like weird, telling employees what they need to know.
But I think that's important, Sandy.
Well, that's fine, but I think, you know, we have to be asking the teachers what they think they need to know.
Which, right.
That's the needs assessment.
What employees need to know. You're, you're deceiving from a different angle, but they mean that if you're asking me what I need, I'm gonna tell you what I need to know, and it's not what you're telling me. I think it's just maybe, I think it's a surprise.
I, I think it's, it's gotta be two-pronged. It has to be setting expectations for skill sets you need in a specific job.
Exactly.
And then it has to be the piece where the employee.
And so as an employee, this is what I need.
Right.
We, we conduct the needs assessment.
Rather than wordsmith, I'm just gonna include that, make sure that the teachers.
And the sense of the needs assessment is that we're asking you, we're assessing what you need. In, in the absence of the needs assessment, we're just telling you, this is what you need. We don't care what you need, we're not going to outline the expectations, but what we have to do first is find out what you need and then create the programs to support you.
I think the two of you think it's implied, and when I read it, I didn't, so.
And so one of the strategies was to provide early service development programs for all employees. When we think about great beginnings, when we think about what we do for, for new, new principals and new administrators, we don't have those same programs in place for support employees.
That's very interesting.
So what do I do if I'm a new IA, or if I'm a new parent liaison, or if I'm, if I'm onboarding in HR and I'm new to this role, do you just throw me in, or do you?
I, I think that's a great point. And I, and I think that's a missing piece sometimes, because people don't understand our system enough and then how their role is.
Oh, that's right.
I never thought about that.
And then there was, we wanted to provide some greater clarity, because in this section, we talked about provide growth opportunities for all employees, but we wanted to emphasize the different types of employees underhauled.
Say this one is, oh, the overall CPS employee experience, we need to be clear on professional development.
And so the objective is to improve our practices, provide greater clarity, and ensure the fairness and equity. Equity for all employees. Right now, there are those who don't see our, first of all, our regs might be confusing. They're all over the place. We have pieces over right here, we have another piece here. We want to create some clarity for employees, and so I believe that's where we talk about creating the employee handbook.
I mean, in my role this year, it's really hard to put together, and like you said, like, I have to track down the right search and get it out of the information.
It should be. And so this piece here is huge, the employee handbook. We, we don't have anything like that right now, and so that will provide a lot of clarity around our current practices and our current regulations.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy we're talking, because when I first read this, I was thinking of the benefits handbook. I'm like, we have a handbook.
Right.
And I wasn't reading it the right way to realize what you're talking about.
What are my rights as an employee? What are, you know, I, I wouldn't know what my rights were unless I fleshed it out in my records. What are, what are the regulations around teacher placement? What are the reg, what are the key employee?
Need to know.
Need to knows.
It's a great phrase.
That need to be in an employee handbook that's for everyone, with a section for teachers, administrators, support employees, across the board, hourly employees.
Right.
We have a lot of hourly employees, and there's a piece for hourly employees. And if we see changes to compensation, where we're going to provide benefits for.
They work for a certain number of hours, or substitute teachers.
What does that mean for me as an employee? Oh, I get benefits in my life, then. So we need to spell that out for teachers and for all.
I know we don't have that.
We don't, we don't have that.
I mean, I really think just by two cents, it should just be like.
Oh, yeah, it's just an electronic. No, it's an electronic.
Log on, you could be a part of your onboarding experience.
Exactly.
Now, you've been hired, this is the page that you go to, everything you need to know.
Your support employees, support employees begin on page thirty-seven. And on page thirty-seven, it spells out everything from hiring, questions about your benefits, questions about your professional development, all the things that we're talking about here that would be in this document.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, I like it.
Good section.
Okay, let's move to our last group, and then our meeting managers could decide about lunch, and then we can.
And then what are we getting?
And then we come back and report. Okay.
I appreciated your description, because I was just, I was lost myself, I was lost. So it was much better to hear your speech.
You're very welcome. Well, and, you know, sometimes I'm, I'm so familiar with all these, because this is what I've been doing. And so it all makes sense to me. I, I sort of have this all envisioned in my head.
But when you just look at these pages by themselves without the context, it was kind of like, I didn't get it.
So.
And so this helps.
That's good feedback, though, because as we develop this, we need to ensure that we create context. So that anybody. We're going, one more group, then we say this will break the line, and then it's after.
How are you doing?
I'm good, I'm good.
What is your job now?
Director of Talent Acquisition and Management, Deborah Reader's on job.
Keep track of all these.
It's keeping me a little bit busy.
I bet it is.
But in a good way, I love it. Trade free.
Good.
All right, how's it going?
We'll come in over with our scribe.
Yes, I'm ready.
No, 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 oh, no, no.
They're writing this.
Okay.
I'm their secretary.
Yeah, she has a secret computer line that turns all the babble that comes out of her mouth into intelligible ideas.
We already have one, did you? Through the track record of collaboration, principal selection process, yeah.
We're gonna put this up here.
You didn't know that she's, that one of her foreign language accomplishments is school board.
School board?
You speak, you speak school board.
That's right.
That's a gift.
It is a gift. Okay, here we go. It's a gift and a curse. Or you could do what William says. Curse is curses, lemon purses. I said, what does that mean? He goes, I don't know, but it rhymes.
Welcome to Premier Work. I was just at, we were in Atlanta, and so I went to the Coca-Cola Experience on Saturday. I took a few extra days down there and visited Audrey Sidnor, who gives her, but, you know, the whole Coca-Cola experience is. Welcome to the world of Coca-Cola.
Really?
Yeah.
Welcome to the world of FCPs.
They have a big headquarters, and you can see how Coca-Cola is made and everything.
Hey, I was so proud of myself. I rode the train.
I heard that everybody said that Karen said that she rode the train, it was quick.
By myself.
It's better than, I think it's better than, it can work, I think it's more.
It only costs three dollars to ride the train.
Three dollars.
The train where?
To and from the hotel to the airport in Atlanta.
Oh, you rode Marta?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
That's not the train, that's Marta. No, I did not ride Marta.
Okay.
Okay.
Come on. Hey, I did, I did stick out a little bit.
We commit to invest in our employees. We've got the goal here that we've already done. Some word smoothing that we've had for this particular outcome is that FCPs should maintain a high-quality workforce that feels valued, respected, rewarded for its efforts. The last group had a question about the feels, but if we said that, that the workforce is valued, that's from our perspective, and we want the employee to feel.
If you ever want to incorporate feeling, this is the place to put it.
This is where they.
It's okay.
This is where they feel that they are a valued part of the system. And then our objective is to recruit and retain high-quality employees by reviewing practices, developing standards, and expanding the candidate pool.
Look back to that. Recruit and retain high-quality employees.
So our desired outcome, you can see some of the pieces that we've done before. We want to recruit and retain, if you look at our seventeen pieces that come out of EPRA, one of them is clearly about recruiting and retaining the best employees.
Mm-hmm, right.
Can you, um, paper, it's unvited for that, so we can see what it says. I did this because the stickers are unstuck.
High-quality educators are.
Recruitment study.
Yeah, that was one of the first things I was gonna say, is that a lot of the principals were talking about our recruitment practices and how it was really difficult to get people hired in a timely manner. They had to wait, go through all these hoops, and by the time they could finally offer the job, it was too late or something. So I don't know, recruitment study, if that would get it that, but it's, it's the policies and procedures.
But the other thing is also around, who knows they're applying? And the inhibition to apply, because should the name, should the name get out, then they lose the faith in their existing community, and I don't know what they've done about that, but I pulled back today as well.
Are you talking the principal selection process? Yeah, there, there's pieces of that in the principal selection process. When you look at this first piece that other folks have recommended, some use the stickers, some have access to write. Looking at this recruitment study, doing an analysis of the universities and schools where we're drawing teachers, I think that we've been going through the well, the same well, time and time again. And a lot of that well is in Pennsylvania, and there's not a whole lot of diversity in Pennsylvania. So are we going to the right schools for diverse workforce?
Okay, so that's different than what I was talking about, which is.
Okay, this is, and there's a better way to word it, but I think I got it. And that's really simplify the hiring process to reduce the time and increase ease for department heads and principals to hire employees.
Right, good. And I would say another one, just following up on that, is the particular development strategy to recruit and retain the high-needs employees. Special ed is one, right? Though we have so many openings, we can't find the people. But we need a targeted strategy, how do we go about addressing, and that's one, and I don't know if there are others. ESOL, I think, is another one I heard from the principals.
So we've identified.
I'm confused about some of these. I'm confused about the middle one.
Do you have it in?
Teachers from a variety of cultures.
Recruiting strategy.
Are, are we saying that the teacher, that the teachers that we have are not effective teachers?
I'll get to that. What we have currently is develop unique recruiting strategies to target and to represent an employee demographic.
Okay, but specifically.
Well, and that's, and we need to add to that, I think I've got.
And then we've got the other one.
It's high needs areas, such as special ed.
Yes, I think we missed.
But wait a minute, does the emphasis, does the emphasis the background of the teacher or the quality of the teacher?
So.
Because in the end, it's the quality of the teacher that matters.
So this particular group, this was Janie, Megan, and Ted's group, talked about teachers from a variety of cultures. Ensuring that we have the best teacher, but we have a lot of folks who are good teachers in the area who may not have the right certification, so we provide alternative certification groups.
I don't have a problem with that, but one isn't, I have a problem with the one in the middle, because to me, that is an emphasis on the person's culture or background and not their qualifications.
Recruit qualified teachers from a variety of cultures.
But, but why, I don't understand what the point of this.
Well, we've talked about that for years, every time I get a monitoring report from HR, because our teacher demographics do not match our student demographic, right? They don't reflect.
But we also have, how, how many female teachers do we have to male teachers? And how many male students do we have to male, do, do boys need to be taught by, by male teachers?
I think it's kind of value that we have a diverse workforce, right?
What this group, what this group talked about, and if you tie it to this whole idea of cultural competency, and that there are a variety of different cultures that you have to be competent about. Ensuring that we hire, recruiting teachers from a variety of cultures, but really thinking about that in terms of cultural competency. Understanding what different cultures might be going through, what different groups of people might be going through, and applying that to especially the class.
Well, to me, the va, the value in having a more diverse workforce is the value it has for students.
Right.
Because they see people of their own color or ethnicity, and, and, but, but that's only one piece of a modern strategy.
It's happening at Marshall High School, where the Hispanic teachers are mentoring the Hispanic kids and doing after-school things.
I, I have a major problem with this conversation.
Okay, well, let's move on then. We don't have to debate everything on that.
Well, but the problem is, is that is the emphasis that a student needs somebody who looks like them? Or who is the most qualified teacher? And I don't have a qualified teacher regarded.
Well, one does not, one, one does not exclude the other.
That's, that's what that says? It's more important to look for it from a variety of cultures?
No, it didn't say it was more important.
But where's the quality?
We're gonna get to quality.
Okay.
Okay, I think a couple with regard to quality is, and we have them in the larger plan, is how do we front-load quality? So the strategy is front-load quality. And that is, we have twenty-something thousand, well, actually, last year was fifteen thousand or something applicants for jobs, eighteen thousand, whatever it was. But we hired fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred. How can we use that to our advantage? And I'm not sure that we're doing that effectively.
Well.
You know, because we have a unique opportunity other school systems don't have. We had that many applicants.
I mean, when you said going to Pennsylvania, are we going on recruiting trips? And why do we have to go on recruiting trips with Fairfax County? Why can't we, why can't we expand the, so you and I have talked about this, of putting up a job for five days or seven days, and then poof, it's off the job, and like, and hoping that somebody saw it and was like, why, why not expand the, the means by which we're communicating?
We are.
And Indeed is one of them, is now the new aggregator.
Virtual interview.
There, there are some, there are some teachers who won't apply to Fairfax County, because they think that we're one type of county. Oh, and you heard it, that, oh, there's no poverty. We had the Secretary of Education come in. Didn't realize that there was that much poverty in Fairfax County. And so we want to ensure that, that we recruit to bring that high-quality employee to Fairfax County. We just can't rely upon our, you know, rest on our laurels and hope that we get the best people.
I think another way we can.
If we're getting eighteen thousand applications and we hired fifteen hundred people, I, and so, talking. And so, talking about resource stewardship, spending our money to go places to tell people why they should come and work for us, I don't think is wise use of our resources. I think capitalizing on ways to advertise without us having to travel is a better use of the resources and that it becomes a communications issue.
I don't think we need to be recruiting a whole lot. I really don't, with, with some minor exceptions. I will tell you, we probably still have a challenge in special education in those areas. Yeah, so, you know, targeted areas, secondary math and science, high school specifically.
I was going to say high, I was going to say high school.
Specifically, high school.
I can get it in the high school STEM areas, that getting qualified.
Physics, oh, my god.
You know.
Yeah, so I think it's being strategic. Maybe we need to write that.
And our job fairs for this upcoming year are for critical field areas only.
Okay, so the other.
All the areas.
You got that? So the other, um, the other piece of this was recruit and retain. So we've talked a lot about recruiting here, but what about retaining? What are the strategies to retain employees?
So.
How, how much is we're talking? So this is the other thing. Is this a myth or is this a reality? And I haven't seen any statistics on who are we losing and why are we losing them? Because on the one hand, we hear, oh, well, we're going to lose them too, you know, leave them. And, and I'm like, well, how many, how, what are, what's the data? Show me meaningful data that shows, are we really losing people? And how many as a percentage? And where are we losing them? Are we losing elementary teachers? Who are we losing?
It's the Hine schools.
Because then it become, because then, now you can define the strategy, which is, who are you losing? Because you can't just have a strategy. You gotta have both the strategy of who are you losing?
So first, it's getting the information on the retention and attrition, right? And then it's developing the strategy, right? Okay, so we've got that? Yes, right, because we don't know. We talked about the exit strategies and if people choose to do them or whatever, yes, they don't give you much information, the surveys, yes. So there must be another way to get to. I think the, the other reason this comes up a lot is because of where we are on, like, surrounding school systems like Arlington, you know, the difference in our salaries are like.
Have, do we have the analytics to show we've lost these teachers to neighboring jurisdictions? I mean, do we know? I mean, we say it, but.
The only way we know it is we have to go to individual schools.
Right.
And they know.
I mean, you know, the, the understanding I have is our biggest loss, our biggest risk loss is that zero to five years, when they're, you know, in that initial phase. And when you, I mean, and that's front-loading a lot of investment to ramp up, run maybe, that is, that's hugely detrimental. That's a new trust of the system to replace somebody that you've just addressed in three or four years, getting them, you know.
Well, we have some metrics on our Great New Age program and how successful that has been at retaining teachers over time. So I know the, I've seen that data somewhere and we can invite some.
But, yeah, that would be good to get that information. That's a new one.
Okay.
Be private and explicit with the needs.
Essentially, that's, that's being more explicit about what our expectations are with colleges and universities.
That was this one.
We're having to retrain.
Expand partnerships with public.
Well, especially now that we're talking about twenty-first century skills.
Public universities regarding teacher training programs.
Teachers don't know how to teach. On who we really, on being focused with our analytics and on retention. Because I don't think we can figure out how to obtain.
Analyze retention data and develop strategies.
What the base data is and then be targeted around.
Right, exactly, yeah. And what about the working conditions here? Somehow we need to get this bottom-up idea about, you know, what will it take to keep our employees? What are they saying is most important? Yeah, I mean, so is that something that we're already doing or that, you know, I mean, it kind of overlaps a little bit with the culture one.
It does.
And there's something between, um, getting employees and retaining them, which is having productive employees and products.
Yes.
Maybe they haven't left, but are they happy? Are they?
Right, that's what I was trying to get at.
Are they, you know, are they engaged from the bus to the car or are they checking the block? You know, they show up every day.
They're showing time slots.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the compensation package. We want to identify or show folks that your compensation is more than just your paycheck. That it's your, it's the professional development that we provide, it's the benefits that we provide, it's the portion of the benefits that we pay currently.
Total compensation.
Yes, good. So we've got to begin to identify.
People don't see that within their compensation.
Yes, all of that.
And that is, that is huge. And frankly, that'll go a long way to the transparency piece.
Exactly.
Which is, we're communicating the total value of the rest of the employee.
Yeah, maybe annually you could give them a summary. Here's how much we paid for this, here's the training, and that was worth that, and, you know. That's why we tend to also be able to keep teachers toward, once they get a little closer toward the end of their career, they know the value of our local retirement.
Retirement.
Yeah, no kidding. But when they're one to, zero to five, they're not paying attention. It's what's in their pocket.
Right.
And so we talked about looking at deferred contribution plans for teachers. We talked about looking at flexible benefit plans that, that come in different life cycles. So as a first-year teacher or first through five years, I might have more of my compensation go towards salary.
Yep.
And then I might be able to slide the bar as I go through and have more of that.
Cafeteria plan.
More of that compensation go toward.
Love it. Love it.
Go toward retirement. And so the flexibility is with the employee.
Exactly.
It's the same compensation, it's just the employee elects how that compensation is directed.
It'll affect their retirement.
Yeah, it'll affect their retirement.
Yeah, it'll affect the amount they get in retirement.
It'll, it'll affect their retirement. And then, um, review alternative compensation factors, looking at alternative compensation factors and comparing those to our current. The last group didn't feel that that was explicit enough within the compensation study, but it will be part of that. We're going to maintain a highly qualified workforce. We'll receive ongoing feedback, frequent reading, personal development.
Did you have someone to add to that?
Well, I was just thinking about, um, maybe it's kind of a one-off, but the idea, particularly of the people who've come back, that a lot of the retirees have so much to offer, and have we adequately capitalized on what they have to offer?
Well, what is, well, the opposite side is, when you bring a retiree back, who's already. Just because. And you're paying them. Right, and they're double-dipping. Yeah, how much does that cost them?
Right, and that, that's an issue I think I raised with you, Karen, as I know, when I was reading the budget from Orleans and France, they just set a price for all returning employees. So they, they, you know, if they left up here, that might be well and good, but when you come back as a hard-timer, you're here, you get this, because you're already doing very well for yourself. We do that. That's exactly what we do.
Oh, we do?
And there are people that do not like it.
Well, good. Good for them.
He's like. He is.
Oh, so we already do that?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Oh, yeah. And Bill, uh, what's his name over at Hill Carroll?
Uh, Plan Daniel. Well, you know, you know what? That's okay, because you don't have to come back.
He's getting his retirement.
Yeah, really.
And he's getting a good.
Yeah, okay.
Salary, but he wants it to be when he, what he got when he left.
No kidding. Yeah, well, that's not happening. Okay. All right, this one.
That's being greedy.